Hello, I'm J. Jermaine Bay, Maloney and Morse's Paradeam, Antay Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of the Council of Court. Today's class 123, Class 123. When did we learn in Class 122? Well, we started learning a little bit more about the Kingdom of Morocco, right? We learned that even the Sultan turned King, right? Mohammed V actually declared his own independence around 1943, right? He wrote a Declaration of Independence and in that Declaration of Independence, he proclaimed his independence away from who? France, right? So, how many people signed off on his Declaration of Independence? 66 people. Think about that for a second. Only 66 people signed off on the Declaration of Independence along with Mohammed V. That's all it took for him to declare his independence. And after that, what happened? Eventually, Mohammed V was able to sign an agreement with France, right? March 2nd, 1956. France relinquished what? Their colonialism over the Empire of Morocco, right? And shortly thereafter, around November of 1956, now Mohammed V, who now a king instead of sultan, now becomes a member state of the United Nations, right? 1956. Shortly thereafter, right? They drafted a constitution, but unfortunately Mohammed V transitioned in the year 1961. His son Hassan II took over, right? He became king. And Hassan II went on ahead and fully ratified the constitution and deposited, registered with who? The United Nations. So therefore, the Kingdom of Morocco became a member state in 1956, but they didn't deposit their constitution until 1962. But what is the purpose of understanding that? Well, see, what Moors have to understand is all about due process of law. Even Mohammed V had to follow the instructions of international law, right? The procedure of international law. He declared his independence, right? He put that in a properly written instrument. And what did he do next? He drafted a constitution. It was fully ratified, right? And then it was deposited with the United Nations. And that's the same thing all the Moors have to do. If the Sultan turned King had to do it, then what makes Moors think they don't have to do it, right? So therefore, once they had their constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco, what happened? Well, two things happened. First of all, that land became what's called Uti possidatus juris, okay? That's an Uti possidatus juris territory that the King of Morocco now claims, right? And now because of their constitution, their most updated constitution has been amended in the year 2011, you go down to Article 4, and what does Article 4 talk about in their constitution? It talks about their flag, their sovereign flag, right? Their political flag is what? The red flag with the green five-pointed star. So therefore, once the Moors started studying and started getting to what's called, uh, instead of fellowship, we started getting to what? Scholarship, right? We studied and learned that the King of Morocco's flag only protects the citizens of the Kingdom of Morocco. The King of Morocco's flag could not provide protection for any Moors whatsoever and what we commonly call "the West," right? So we had to learn that in politics, you have to respect people's flag, their sovereign flags. And the problem is, the Moors unfortunately were miseducated, right? Misinformed, right? We suffer from cognitive dissonance because we're still trying to figure out who we are. We should have understood that we are Moroccans. We need a Moroccan flag for Moors, right? For our what? Moors governments over here in the West. As Moors start to study and you start reading other people's constitutions, all the Moors on planet Earth have their own flag of their territory, all of them. And we, the Moors over here in the West, were the only ones claiming a flag. They did not even claim us. The King of Morocco did not adopt us. They did not. They were waiting for the Moors to wake up and fend for themselves, right? That was part of negotiation with Mohammed V. Mohammed V wanted his independence. Well, they negotiated something where he turned around and threw the Moors underneath the bus in order to get his independence. But at the same time, let's think about it. What else did Mohammed V do? He vacated the seat of the empire and he vacated the seat of Sultan. And now the empire and the seat of the Sultan is wide open. It's sitting there collecting dust. Because as long as the treaties recognize the empire, then the empire still exists. It's organic with a capital E. Empire with a capital E. It's a proper noun, right? Because the treaties still recognize the empire. The 12 secretaries powers to the treaties still recognize the empire as being "the" territory, right? "The" territory, right? But how is the Moors can take back possession of their territories? Well, it's called Uti possidatus juris, right? That's another thing we learned in Class 122. If the Moors don't understand Uti possidatus juris, then that means you don't understand international law, which means you'll never get your sovereignty back, right? International law is specific, right? You must understand the customs and the rule of international law. Based upon your erga honest obligations, you have to claim each territory at a time, right? So if the Moors want the empire back, then we have to claim Florida, right? Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, right? New Orleans, right? You got what? New Mexico, Nevada, California, right? Oregon, Seattle, Utah, right? You got ANPAC has already taken over the territory of what's commonly known as Colorado, right? Even though Colorado is a charter, right? But we have to take over territories one territory at a time under Uti possidatus juris. And we don't follow those procedures of international law, then we can never ever get our territories back. That must be understood, alright? So let's go ahead and get into class. As the Moors know, always open up the constitution. Constitution is paramount. This is ANPAC's constitution as an example, right? So when you have your constitution, it gives you an opportunity to do what? Now, all the Moors and all the territories under the Uti possidatus jurisdiction can now proclaim a seal and their own flag under their jurisdiction. All seven of these seals are states. And all these states have their own individual flag to represent the politics of their territory, of their Uti possidatus jurisdiction, right? Okay, but all seven of these states, Moroccan states, come under this one single empire flag. For who? Moroccan, Moroccan nationals. They have followed the instructions of the treaties, right? Treaty Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1 says you must do what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country shall return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire, right? What about the empire though? It's about the empire government. You see? So, since Mohammed V vacated the central government, the Moors didn't have a central government to come to. We have to establish our own governments all over again, over here in the West. So therefore, if there was no Moroccan government to return to, then how were we supposed to return? Well, the answer was easy. Under what? Self-determination of international law. Self-determination allowed Moors to establish their own states. That way, we could follow the instructions of the treaties, right? We had to establish our own Moroccan governments in the West. And through the Moroccan governments, then we could turn around and start to put the empire back together again. You see? With the understanding that this is the new Moors' empire flag, right? Because as the Moors know, the King of Morocco's flag does not provide protections for Moors. The Kingdom of Morocco's flag, in their constitution, Article 4, that flag is only for the citizens of the Kingdom of Morocco. However, the new Empire of Morocco flag will put protections for Moroccan nationals, right? All Moroccan nationals will come under the empire flag, but it starts first with your own Uti possidatus jurisdiction of your state, right? All the Moors need their own territorial seal and flag, right? Right, so as an example, come down. As an example, these are flags of Moroccan states, okay? That's what we gotta understand. Right here, now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 flags, right? 7 flags. Now, you got the King of Morocco's flag, right? You got the Amazai people's flag right here, out of due respect. But they don't come under the empire flag. We just have their flag on there as honorary mention, right? But these 7 flags right here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, come under the empire flag, right? That must be understood. We're growing, right? Growing in our competency level, okay? And that's what the constitution allows you to do. Without the constitution, you cannot establish a flag, seal, or state, right? That must be understood, okay? Now, as you know, as of late, we've been going over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. We've been diving in a little deeper about the Charter's Chapter 11, right? Chapter 11 is very important in international law regarding decolonization, right? So, um, we started reading over Article 73 and 74, which is involved with Chapter 11. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna read Article 73 one more time, the basic preamble of it, and then we're gonna move on, okay? That way, we'll go a little deeper, alright? So if I have a volunteer, good brother Drake.
Chapter 11, Declaration Regarding Non-Sub-Governing Territories. Article 73. Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained the full measure of sub-government recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of these territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present charter the well-being of the inhabitants of these territories and to this end.
Alright, thank you very much. So today's class, okay, Moors? Is really to put a lot more emphasis on Chapter 11, especially regarding what? The administration, right? What does the word "administration" mean? That's the colonizers, right? That's what they call the political correct terminology. That's the nice word they like to give themselves, right? But the reality is, it should just say "colonizers," right? So we're gonna learn about that a little bit more today, about the administration of territories, because all the colonies have, uh, given themselves the right to oversee the territories of indigenous people. As long as indigenous people don't have governments, such as the Moors. The Moors, they ran all the Moors out of government, so now the colonists are controlling the territories. They call it territorial jurisdiction. Why? Because they got the three branches of government and the Moors did not, you see? So the Moors came under what's called extraterritorial jurisdiction, because Moors wasn't governing themselves. They didn't have the three branches of government. You gotta understand what's happening, alright? So now, Article 73 is about the Moors coming back to what's called self-government, right? Under what's called self-determination. And under self-determination, you can determine your own government through your state. It's not about you being an individual state all by yourself, not about a state of mind. It's about an actual state through your constitution. That's where it starts. Declaration of Independence, your state constitution, right? Alright, so we'll learn more about this today, okay? Alright, so I have another feature for the Moors today. Have a constitution. This is for the Mauritius, right? Mauritius Constitution of 1968, right? They got amendments all the way through the year 2016. But when the people, the Mauritius Constitution, when it was established in 1968, uh, the people were on an island, right? And these are Moors, by the way, alright? See the Mauritius, right? Mauritius, we're gonna learn about that today, okay? Now, where is Mauritius located? Well, right here is Africa, okay? Madagascar Island, okay? It is Mauritius Island right here, okay? Mauritius Island. And all this right here is also Caycos Archipelago, right? The Caycos Islands. All this is part of the same state, right? All these islands and what's commonly known as the Indian Ocean, okay? So going back to the constitution, it's about the Mauritius Constitution of 1968, okay? Just a moment. What do the people look like? Okay, there they go. Keep in mind, the island has a mixed culture, okay? It's a very mixed culture. But there they go, okay? You got people from India there, you got Moors there, people that speak French, they call them Creoles there. You got some Chinese people there, right? It's an intermixed group of people, alright? Okay, there they go. Alright, so as we see, different complexions, right? And they're all living together on that one island, okay? Several islands, that is. You gotta remember, the Mauritius Islands compose about almost 50 to 60 different islands, small islands, alright? It's a mixture of people, okay? So you got Indians on it, like I said, okay? There they go. The Mauritius people, right? You got Creoles, et cetera. Because France was over there controlling the territory one time, alright? There they go, okay? That's them, alright? There they go, mixture of people, that's their flag, okay? They got their own flag, alright? This is what Moors gotta understand, about flags. Okay, you can't keep claiming the King of Morocco's flag when it's not your flag. You need to have your own flag, okay? But there they go, that's the Moors, right? These are Moors, okay? That's what it's all about, alright? Just wanted to show you a few images. It's a mixed culture, okay? But that's them, alright? The Mauritius, okay? Now, going back to the constitution. What about their constitution, okay? Now, this is what Moors have to learn. Because these are Moors on an island, okay? Mauritius, right? Mauritius, right? More, Mauritius, Moorish. Moorish. You see it? We're talking about that today, alright? Now, what about their constitution? Well, they got three branches of government, right? Okay, let's learn about that. Alright, so part of their three branches of government, right here says they have a president, right? It says the president and the vice-president are the Republic of Mauritius. You see that? They got a head of state, right? What else do they have, okay? Got the vice-president, you see? Okay, they got executive branch. You see that? Their executive branch consists of what? Okay, executive authority of Mauritius. Section 1, the executive authority of Mauritius is vested in the president. You see that? Executive branch. They got a head of state, you see? Alright, what else do they have? They have what? They have their legislative branch, right? Which they call the parliament, okay? The parliament. What's the parliament all about, okay? The National Assembly, the Parliament of Mauritius, right? There shall be a parliament of Mauritius which shall consist of the president and national assembly, right? Legislative branch, right? So, they also have a judicial branch, okay? There we go. Judicial. Okay, what about judicial branch, okay? Here we go. Section 1, there shall be a judicial and legal service commission which shall consist of the chief justice. You see that? They got three branches of government. These are Moors on an island, right? Since 1968. What were we doing in 1968 of the people over here? We was marching and praying. Talking about civil rights, which is domestic rights. When there's Moors on an island, right? You got Moors on an island fighting for what? Independence away from the colonists. They were decolonizing. When we go there fighting for civil rights, begging the colonists to give us rights, internal rights, instead of us having external what? Self-determination and independence, you see? You gotta understand what's happening here, Moors, alright? So this is their constitution, okay? Just a moment, let's go to the top. Alright, so the Moors have to understand, in 1968, Moors, right? Were putting together their Moorish constitution in 1968, right? Okay, well, what else about the constitution, okay? So, now you got the Mauritius Islands, right? Outside of Madagascar, okay? It's also talking about Caycos. There's a reason why I have this right here, is Caycos. Gonna learn more about that today, alright? Alright, now, you see what Madagascar is? Okay. Where do those people look like? There they go. Madagascar people, alright? Let's get a, just basic fundamental understanding of who are we talking about? Moors, okay? The Madagascar people. That's them, right? Madagascar is, it's an island, okay? They're Moors, okay? They're Moors. There they go. That's them, right? Now what about Caycos? The Caycos Island. Well, there they go. The Caycos Island. That's them. They got their own flag. You see how they're proud? They got their own flag. You see that? They're on an island. These are Moors, okay? These are Moors. There they go. The Moors. They're on an island. Fighting for independence since the 1960s, right? And they did get their independence. They got their own flag, right? So we gotta understand, this is what this is all about, right? So today, we're gonna take a deeper dive into the problems that these Moors are having on an island, right? But they started a good fight in the 1960s. That's what you gotta understand. And they were able to get their independence, but they're still got some minor things going on with Great Britain and the United States. We're talking about that today, right? But we gotta understand that the Moors in the West are the last ones to show up to the dance of decolonization. If decolonization was a marathon, the Moors in the West would be at the back of the marathon. We'd be at the back. We're the last ones to show up. We've delayed our own justice. When these Moors already have been fighting a good fight. And right now, they're on an island, fighting against the United States and Great Britain, because they want their rights to come back to the island, right? The United States took over their island and built a big giant air force base, right? So they're fighting to get back on the island. We'll learn more about that today, okay? Okay, so back to the Mauritius, okay? So we're gonna learn a little bit more about them. Like I said, there's their flag, okay? They have a flag. They got their own flag, right? That's what we gotta learn, okay? See what they say? Republic Morris. See that? See that Maurice? Republice, be Maurice. We know about Saint Maurice and Moors, you see? They know exactly who these people are. These people are Moors, more, you see? Alright? Okay, let's learn a little bit about them, alright? Good brother Drake.
Mauritius. French Maurice. Looks like maritime Creole, um, Morris. Officially, the Republic of Mauritius, um, is an island country in the Indian Ocean, about 2,000 kilometers off the southeastern coast of East Africa, east of Madagascar. It includes the main island, also called Mauritius and Rodriguez, Agalega, and St. Brandon. The islands of Mauritius and Rodriguez, um, along with nearby reunion, a French overseas department, are part of the Masaraean Islands. The main island of Mauritius, where most of the people live, has a capital and largest city, Port Louis. The country spans 2,040 square kilometers and has an exclusive economic zone covering 2,300,000 square kilometers. Mauritius is one of the most densely populated countries in the world.
Alright, pause right there, okay? So, let's look at a bit, a little bit of historical context, okay? Before we break down this paragraph, check this out, alright? Look over here to the left, right? Look at this history. Okay, so, history. It says, "The Portuguese, right? Named the people Mauritius, right? In 1507 to 1590, so Portugal was overseeing the land." Called the Moors, right? Moorish. See that? Mauritius, Moorish, right? Then the Dutch came, also called the people Moorish, right? Mauritius, right? 1638 to 1710, the French came in, gave them the same name, Moors, right? The British came in, said, "Yeah, these are Moors," right? Now watch this. But then the British said, "Okay, under British rule, from 1834 to 1921 says Indian labor imported." You see that? So when everybody else found a land, it was just strictly Moors. But then they brought some Indians in to become a part of labor force, you see? And that's how it ended up being intermixed in the islands, alright? But when they first got there, they found nobody there but who? Moors, right? Isn't it interesting that everything Europeans talk about is always after 1492? Isn't that interesting? It's almost like the Europeans weren't allowed to come out to what's called, commonly called what? The Seven Seas, right? The Moors was always watching the Seven Seas for years, until they fell in 1492, right? So, going back to an understanding of the Mauritius, right? Because this is what the colonists called them, they called them Moors, right? So from the top, it says Mauritius, right? They start breaking down the, how you pronounce it. Look, look how they pronounce it. Look at that. Look. Merrish. Merrish. More. See that? Moorish. Merrish. Maurice. Moorish. You see that? You got French Maurice. But we know about Saint Maurice was a Moor, right? So, you gotta understand what's really going on here. They already know these are Moors. Because all the colonists called everybody that was copper-colored Moors. Before the word "black" or "negro" came into lexicon, everybody on planet Earth was named Moors after 1492. Because the Portuguese, they knew the word "more" backwards and forward, right? That's what you gotta understand. Everybody on planet Earth was called Moors. Especially when the Europeans found, they said, "Oh, those are Moors." Are they copper-colored? They're just Moors. You see what I'm saying? You gotta understand what's happening. The Moors controlled, was called the Seven Seas, alright? So up here, I got the Seven Seas separated by the equator, okay? What about the Seven Seas? What consists of the Seven Seas, okay? Number 1, the North Atlantic. Then you got the South Atlantic Ocean, right? Number 3, the Indian Ocean, right? Then you got number 4, North Pacific. Number 5, South Pacific. Number 6, North Pole. Number 7, South Pole. That's the Seven Seas. The Moors was in charge of controlling the Seven Seas for centuries, you see? This is why the Europeans, their history don't really start until after 1492. Once the Moors fell, Europeans came up out of Europe. They started sailing everywhere and calling everything "the New World." Yeah, but it was an ancient world that was new to them. And they called everybody Moors, you see? But you see where it says Indian Ocean? Why they call it Indian Ocean? When it said, they named it after what? Indian, right? The state of India. But even India doesn't really like to call themselves Indians, right? But yet, what do they say the Moors? Who the Moors are? Listen. Okay, if I go to Anomalous Dictionary, right? Online, I type in "Moors," right? "Moors" pops up, right? So now you got 8 parts of speech. You got "Moors," lowercase "m," "Berger," "Moren now," lowercase "m," "coming now." Then you come down to "Moors," capital "M," right? Proper noun, right? What do they say about the Moors in Anomalous Dictionary? Okay. Let's go ahead and read it, just a moment. Good brother Joseph.
"Moors now, North African, Berger, one of the raised dwelling in Barbary. Late 14th century, from old French "Moors," from medieval Latin "Moros," from Latin "Moros," inhabitant of Mauritania. Roman northwest Africa, a region now corresponding to North Algeria and Morocco. From Greek "Moros," perhaps a native name or else cognate, uh, cognate with "Moros," black. But this adjective only appears in late Greek and may as well be from the people's name as the reserve, uh, reverse, excuse me. Also applied to the Arabic conquerors of Spain, being dark people in relation to Europeans. Their name in the Middle Ages was a synonym for negro. Later 16th century through 17th century, being the nearest Muslim to Western Europe. It was used indiscriminately of Muslims, Persians, Arabs, et cetera, but especially those in India. Cognate with Dutch "Moors," German "Moors," Danish "Moors," Spanish "Moro," Italian "Moro," related "Mooris."
Uh-huh, so the word "Moors," right? The word "Moors" is a synonym, right? With what? Well, they said, the word "Moors" is a synonym with even the word "black," right? Synonym with the word "black"? The word "Moors" is a synonym with the word "negro"? And the word "Moors" is synonym with simply just the word "Moors," you see that? Semantics, right? But these are what you call what? Nam de guerres. Negro and blacks are nam de guerres, right? Misnomer. But the nationality of the Moors is what? Moroccan, right? What's abbreviation for Moroccan? More, you see? But what else did I want to show you this? Okay, look what it said about India. Says right here, this last paragraph. Also applied to the Arabic conquerors of Spain, Moors. Being a dark people in relation to Europeans, their name in the Middle Ages was a synonym for negro later 16th century to 17th century, you see? So the word negro didn't even come into the vocabulary until the 16th century, 17th century, you see? Being the nearest Muslim to Western Europe, it was used indiscriminately of Muslims, Persians, Arabs, et cetera, but, listen. But especially those in India, you see that? Especially those in India. Well, what about those in India? Okay, all the people in India are what? India what? Are what? Moors. Right? So going back to the Seven Seas, listen. So when they say Indian Ocean is part of the Seven Seas, guess what the Indian Ocean is? The Moors Ocean, you see? Cuz India are Moors, right? India's Moors. They call them Moors, right? Keep in mind that even India is trying to change their name, right? That India, right? South Asia, okay? They're trying to change their name back to their original name, right? Is what? Barat, right? So it says, "The official name for the country is mentioned in the Indian Constitution as India. That is Barat." "That shall be a union of states," right? That's what it means, a union of states, okay? But they're trying to change their name, right? Cuz everybody knows oftentimes, even though they call themselves, um, Indians, they also call themselves Hindustans, right? A third name. Hindustan, right? Hindustan, but they also go back what? Sindhu, right? But who did the colonists call? Moors, you see? So it should be the Moorish Ocean, you see? That's what you gotta understand here. The Moors controlled the Seven Seas, including India, but even India don't wanna really be called India. Right? And the people on the island are being called what? Moorish, right? So therefore, India's wa- was also called Marlin, you see? Gotta understand what's happening. Look at this. See this word right here? Mauritania. Inhabitants, the Moors are inhabitants of Mauritania. M-A-U-R. See that? Mar, more, Mauritania. Alright, you go back to the Constitution. Mauritius, right? The Mauritius, M-A-U-R. You see what's happening? Mauritania, right? Okay, listen. This is a map Moors should be familiar with. Kingdom of Morocco as of today, right? You got Tangier. You're right, you got Gibraltar up top. You got City of Fez, you got Casablanca, right? Casablanca, which is Latin for what? White House. The United States over in the West, they got the White House in the District of Columbia, right? Cuz it's the extreme west of the empire of Morocco, right? But look. You got Marrakesh, M-A-R, Marrakesh, Marrakesh, right? Morris, Morris, Morakesh, Morris. Okay, then you got Mauritania down here at the bottom. You got the Western Sahara. You got Mauritania. See that? Mauritania, M-A-U-R-I-T-A-N-I-A, right? Mauritania. Then you come back to the people on the island's constitution. Right, Mauritius, Moorish, Mauritania. You see how they get all these words as synonyms? See, everywhere the Europeans is going, they just naming everybody Moore. You see? That's important to understand. Let's listen to a quick video, alright? So this video is about three minutes, alright? Uh, on YouTube, it's called "Who are the Mauritians, People of Mauritius," right? Uh, the author is Drew Binskey. He has 3.9 million subscribers. Go and check out his channel, alright? Subscribe. Let's check it out. Let's listen.
Few people I've met are as diverse and multilingual as the people of Mauritius. And that's because there's no indigenous population. The locals are mostly descendants of India, France, Great Britain, Madagascar, and China.
My ancestors came from India, Russia, and France, and Africa.
My ancestors came from India, Africa, China, and Great Britain.
Their faces make up every shape, size, and color, and it's cool to witness them all coexisting peacefully as one nation.
We are Mauritians.
Hello.
Welcome.
As far as religion goes, it breaks down to about 15% Muslim, 25% Roman Catholic, and 52% Hindu, making Mauritius the only country in Africa with Hinduism as the main religion. And whenever one religion has a holiday, the entire country celebrates it, like Diwali, or Christmas, or the end of Ramadan. That's why there are about 20 holidays every year in Mauritius. Their culture and lifestyle has absorbed pieces from their former colonization countries
So this is a Sahara Distillery where we make rum.
Such as driving on the left side of the road from the British, their tasty spices from the Indians, and the foundation of their language, Creole, from the French. Speaking of languages, almost everyone in Mauritius speaks at least three languages fluently. Creole, French, and English, and a fourth is commonly spoken, such as Hindi, Tamil, or Mandarin.
Now we speak English.
I speak English.
And now foreign language.
I speak Hindi.
But perhaps the best part about Mauritius's diverse culture can be seen in its food, particularly street food, which CNN ranked as the top 10 best in the world.
I serve little roasted meat by myself.
How many years have you been cooking this food?
Sixty years. When I am five years old, I sit with my father on the roadside.
Hmm.
At night, every dish came here from overseas, mostly India, or China, or East Africa, and has transformed into its own Mauritian style.
Now we are living in the Indian area and entering the Chinese one.
Sesame cake with sweet potato, uh, rice flour and black sesame.
Chinese sesame.
Chicken shushu wrapped in rice flour and fish ball.
So now, when you think of Mauritius and its culture, don't forget about the diversity that comes along with it. I'm Drew Binskey, and if you like my channel videos, please click subscribe and join me as I've learned to visit every coun-
Alright, so that's just a quick glimpse. Alright, uh, you gotta, uh, dodge the hijack a little bit on the front end cuz he said, "There's no indigenous people on the land." That's ridiculous, right? They were Moors, right? So the Moors were founded in the 1500s, right, by the Europeans. I mean, they, they always been there, right? See? But we do thank the good brother for at least putting together a video to show the diversity of the island, okay? But now, let's talk about the Keikos Island, okay? The Keikos Island, alright, keep in mind, Keikos Island was about 1,300 miles away from the Mauritius Island, okay? You got Mauritius Island, then you got about 1,300 mile will be Keikos, right? But the reality is this, listen, before I show you the video, listen. When you go to Mauritius Constitution, okay? And go down to the subsection in charge to talk about the islands. These are the islands that the Mauritius includes, right? All these islands, right? Uh, your brother, uh, Dre.
Mauritius includes, A, the islands of Mauritius, Mauritius, Alaga, Chomlin, Carigados, Carajos, and the, um, Carigos Acapello, including Diego Garcia and any other island comp- uh, comprised in the state of Mauritius.
So the state of Mauritius, right, the state, the state of Mauritius encompasses a whole bunch of islands. Right? It's not one just landmass, it's a bunch of islands, right? It encompasses all those islands they just mentioned in one constitution. So that one constitution is like the parent constitution of all those islands, alright? And all the rest of the islands are somewhat in a, a dependency status, right? They're interdependent upon the main island of Mauritius, okay? Hope everybody understands that, okay? So that's why, when you look at like that, that constitution says Mauritius includes, and it names all these islands, okay? Now let's look at a video of the Keikos people, right? So it shows you Mauritius. Now let's look at Keikos Island, okay?
They came from the Seychelles in the UK to witness this historic moment. After a lengthy investigation, Human Rights Watch found Britain and the US committed crimes against humanity when chasing the people of Checos from their homeland more than 50 years ago. Elian was one of the last Checosians to leave the island in 1973.
I would be happy to see the British and American governments take responsibility. I would have liked it to happen sooner. We would like to return to our island.
A small archipelago at the heart of the Indian Ocean, the Checos Islands fell under the rule of the British colonial empire during the 18th century. In the 1960s, authorities began deporting native populations to make way for a US Navy base on Diego Garcia. In total, around 1,500 people were forcibly removed from their homes.
Both governments committed crimes against humanity against the Checosian people. They did so by forcibly displacing them away from the archipelago, by abandoning them in Mauritius and the Seychelles.
For these Checosians, the Human Rights Watch report vindicates a decades-long struggle for justice. Many now hope the findings can help them in their quest to return home.
It's time to have a reparation. A reparation is the amount of money, a reparation of, they just rebuild something and allow people to rest at the room.
In 2016, the British government acknowledged wrongdoing in its handling of the Checos Islands. It granted automatic citizenship to Checosian descendants living in the UK, but refused them the rights to return to their homeland citing security reasons. They came
Right, so, these are Moors on an island, right? Declared independent, 1968, wife from the Mauritius Islands, right? But these Keikos Moors on a totally different island, but they come under one constitution, right? Or the Mauritius Island, right? So, these Moors are fighting for their independence. We're gonna learn more about that. So this video can be found called "Keikos Islands Dispute," right? Human, um, Human Resources or, uh, Watch, right? Um, condemns UK-US actions on acapella, France 24 English. Uh, this France 24 English channel got about 2.8 million subscribers, alright? Go back and subscribe. So, so the Keikos Moors have been displaced. They've been put off their island. And Great Britain and the United States built a big giant air force base on the island and put the Keikos Moors off of it. And put the Keikos Moors on the other islands such as Mauritius Island. They took some of them back to Great Britain, et cetera. And the people are trying to come back to their island and get their rights of self-determination to come back into their own territorial jurisdiction, right? And right now, they've been fighting to get their rights back to come back to the island. We're gonna learn more about that today, okay? But these are Moors, okay? What happened? Let's learn a little bit more. This right here is a video about what is the Keikos Islands dispute? Security, human rights, and Britain's incomplete decolonization, right? This is your brother Professor James Kremincic. I got about 150 subscribers through this page and subscribe. He does a good job, alright? Let's listen.
2019, the United Kingdom suffered one of its most serious ever defeats at the United Nations when the General Assembly demanded that it abide by an international court of justice advisory opinion and cede the Checos Archipelago to Mauritius. In this video, I'm going to look at the so-called Checos Islands disputes. In doing so, I'll show how and why this tiny collection of islands in the middle of the Indian Ocean is such a crucial and sensitive issue, not only for Britain, but also for the United States, and how it touches on the important aspects of decolonization and human rights.
Hello, my name is James Colletti. Welcome to Independent Thinking, a channel dedicated to international relations, statehood, independence, and the origins of countries. If you were asked to put together a list of the world's territorial disputes, the chances are that the Checos Islands would rank fairly low in terms of wide recognition.
When you have these woke revolutions, it requires all of us at some point to say, "No, not going to do..."
Now officially known as the British Indian Ocean Territory, the 55 or so islands of the archipelago, or stretching across 640,000 square kilometers or a quarter of a million square miles of ocean, cover a mere 60 square kilometers or 23 square miles of actual land. However, the small size and relative obscurity of the archipelago disguises its significance in international relations. In the 50 years or so since it was built, the joint British-US military facility on Diego Garcia, the largest of the Checos Islands, has played a crucial part in various military operations in the Middle East and South Asia, including Iraq and Afghanistan. Indeed, it's ideally placed to support military activities across an entire arc stretching from East Africa to Southeast Asia. But the Checos Islands have also become large in controversy. The British government has faced numerous court cases over its treatment of the island's inhabitants. Meanwhile, the manner in which Britain took hold of the island has become a major dispute that has gone all the way to the United Nations General Assembly and the International Court of Justice. The story begins in 1814. Under the Treaty of Paris, Britain agreed to hand back a number of territories that had conquered from France in 1792. However, a few would remain under British sovereignty. In the Indian Ocean, Britain retained control of Mauritius, the Seychelles, and the Checos Archipelago. A collection of islands lying approximately 2,100 kilometers or 1,300 miles to the northeast of Mauritius. Collectively, these territories were administered from Mauritius, although the Seychelles became a separate crown colony in 1903. By the start of the 1960s, and in line with the process of decolonization taking place worldwide, Mauritius began to call for its own independence. However, unprompted by interest from the United States, Britain decided to retain control of the sparsely populated Checos Archipelago, which held a strategically vital location at the center of the Indian Ocean. In September 1965, following negotiations in London with Mauritian representatives, it was announced that the islands had been detached from Mauritius in return for £3 million in compensation, and a commitment that the islands would be returned to Mauritius if no longer needed for defense purposes. Weeks later, it was announced that the Checos Islands would become part of the newly established British Indian Ocean Territory. Although Britain insisted that the agreement had been legitimately reached, it nevertheless sparked international concern. On 16th of December 1965, the UN General Assembly passed Resolution 2066. As well as noting the rights of the people of Mauritius to freedom and independence, it also invited the government of the United Kingdom to take no action which would dismember the territory of Mauritius and violate its territorial integrity. Over the next two years, several more General Assembly resolutions were passed that not only reiterated that the need to respect the territorial integrity of colonies, but also noted that the establishment of military bases and installations in these territories is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations. Despite this, Britain refused to reconsider its decision. On the 12th of March 1968, Mauritius became independent without the Checos Archipelago. Having detached the islands from Mauritius, Britain and the United States now began building a major military base on the largest of the Checos Islands, Diego Garcia. To facilitate this, it was decided that the inhabitants of the islands should be removed. Between 1967 and 1973, the entire population of Checosians, estimated to be anywhere between 1,400 and 2,000 people, were forcibly deported, mainly to Mauritius, the Seychelles, and then the United Kingdom. As a result, a number of court cases were brought against the British government by the islanders. In 2000, the British High Court ruled that the islanders should be allowed a right of return, except to Diego Garcia. However, the ruling was later overturned. And while Britain eventually came to accept that the manner of the removal of the Checosians was wrong and provided them with compensation, it nevertheless steadfastly refused to allow them to return permanently, although it has arranged some short visits. As far as the British government is concerned, resettlement would not only be unfeasible, it would also be contrary to Britain's defense and security interests. Meanwhile, in the years following independence, Mauritius came to feel increasingly aggrieved at the way the islands had been removed from its jurisdiction. In its view, the separation had been done under duress as a condition for independence. It therefore called for the British Indian Ocean Territory to be disbanded and the islands returned. At the same time, it also took up the case of the Checos islanders, promising that it would begin resettlement if it regained control of the archipelago. Although Mauritius's diplomatic campaign secured several resolutions from the African Union, its big breakthrough came in September 2016 when it brought the matter before the UN General Assembly to request an advisory opinion to request an advisory opinion from the International Court of Justice. Despite strong opposition from Britain and the United States, on the 22nd of June 2017, the Assembly adopted Resolution 71/292 by ninety-four votes in favor to fifteen against. Specifically, two questions were put to the court. A: Was the process of decolonization of Mauritius lawfully completed when Mauritius was granted independence in 1968, following the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius? And B: What are the consequences under international law, including obligations reflected in the above-mentioned resolutions arising from the continued administration by the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland of the Chagos Archipelago, including with respect to the inability of Mauritius to implement a program for the resettlement on the Chagos Archipelago of its nationals, in particular those of Chagosian origin? Following Britain's submissions, oral proceedings got underway at the court in early September 2018. Again, Britain argued that the decision had been made with the agreement of the Mauritian authorities. In response, Mauritius argued that the territory had been detached under pressure as a condition for independence. On the 25th of February 2019, the ICJ gave its advisory opinion. On the first question, the court found that the process of decolonization had not been lawfully completed. Agreeing with the Mauritian position, it argued that Mauritius could not freely concluded an international agreement with the UK while it was under the latter's authority. Therefore, the detachment could not be considered a free and genuine expression of the will of the people concerned. Moreover, in line with international law and relevant General Assembly resolutions, Britain had been required, as the administering power, to respect the territorial integrity of that country, including the Chagos Archipelago. Turning to the second question, the court argued that Britain's continued administration of the Chagos Islands constituted a wrongful act. Accordingly, the United Kingdom is under an obligation to bring an end to its administration of the Chagos Archipelago as rapidly as possible, thereby enabling Mauritius to complete the decolonization of its territory in a manner consistent with the right of peoples to self-determination. The result was obviously a major defeat for the United Kingdom. However, it would get worse. On the 22nd of May 2019, the United Nations General Assembly passed Resolution 73/295 by a massive 116 votes in favor, six against, with 56 abstentions. This demanded that the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland withdraw its colonial administration from the Chagos Archipelago unconditionally within a period of no more than six months from the adoption of the present resolution. Moreover, it urged the United Kingdom to cooperate with Mauritius in facilitating the resettlement of Mauritian nationals, including those of Chagosian origin, in the Chagos Archipelago, and to pose no impediment or obstacle to such resettlement. Needless to say, the six-month deadline set by the Assembly passed without the islands being returned to Mauritius. More to the point, there's little sign that anything will be done anytime soon. In 2016, Britain extended its agreement with the United States for the use of Diego Garcia for another twenty years. To add to this, there is little that can be done to enforce the decision. The ICJ advisory opinion was non-binding. Also, any attempt to address the matter in the Security Council would be blocked by Britain and the United States, both veto-wielding permanent members. While the Chagos Islands dispute may be little-known, it nevertheless touches on a range of important issues. For a start, it highlights the process of decolonization and how borders were drawn by colonial powers, not only at the point of conquest, but also at the time of departure. Then there's the question of human rights and the ability of colonial powers to deport people from their homeland to serve their own interests, a step that Mauritius is now openly calling a crime against humanity. Balanced against this, both the United Kingdom and the United States regard the islands as vital to their security and that of their allies around the world. Indeed, British officials insist that the defense facilities on the British Indian Ocean Territory help to protect people here in Britain and around the world from terrorist threats, organized crime, and piracy. For its part, Mauritius now argues that it would be willing to consider permitting the base to stay. Meanwhile, and perhaps ironically, the dispute has also been seen by some as a symbol of the declining influence of Britain and the United States in the world. Not only was the scale of the defeat at the UN General Assembly surprisingly large, especially on the second resolution, it was notable that most of their NATO allies abstained. Critics also point out that the UK's decision to ignore a ruling of the ICJ and the UN General Assembly resolution undermines its ability to press others to abide by international law at a time when Britain is looking to establish a global role in the aftermath of leaving the European Union. For all these reasons, and regardless of where one stands on the issue, the impact and significance of the Chagos Islands and the dispute over their sovereignty is far greater than many might realize. I hope you found that interesting and useful. If so, here are some other videos that you might enjoy. And don't forget to like and subscribe as this helps the...
Alright, we thank you Professor James. Give us a little bit more insight of what's going on with Chagos Island, alright? Now, there's a couple things the Moors have to take away from Professor James's video, right? One, he was talking about a case, right? So what do I have up here on the board? It says the International Court of Justice, year 2019, 25th of February 2019, right? Legal consequences of the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from the Mauritius in 1965. This ended up being an International Court of Justice advisory opinion, alright? We're gonna talk some more about that, but I just wanted to introduce that right now on the screen, but let's take it to the board. What are we going over right now? Let's recap, alright? Let's keep it simple. Right now, we're talking about the Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 11, Articles 73 and 74, right? About the Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories, okay? Drop-down box about decolonization, transformation of trust territories throughout the Moors' empire, right? Another drop-down box, okay? So now, we're entering to what? The ICJ advisory opinion of 2019 on the Mauritius Islands and their right of territory independence, self-determination, and decolonization, right? So Dr. James, or shall I say Professor James, was mentioning this case, right? Because the Chagos people were placed off their land, right? Their territory, they were displaced, they were trying to come back to the island. So the Mauritius government, the central government, was trying to help the Chagos people to get their land back. So the Mauritius state government had to do what? They had to utilize what? The procedures of international law. That's how they got the independence in the first place, using international law. What immediately should the Moors Americans learn from this already? That you have no choice but to use international law, right? As your legal defense. The Moors Americans should understand that you'll never get your rights by trying to use the domestic laws of the United States. You have to learn how to enforce international law. That's what the Moors are doing on other islands. They've been doing this since the 60s, for God's sake. We're over here in the year 2023, and Moors are still over here trying to figure out how to get their rights. This is shameful. So the Moors on islands are taking Great Britain and the United States to court. World court, ICJ, you see? Now, in this particular case in 2019, it was only advisory opinion. What does that mean? You see, the ICJ has three ways that they can deliver a ruling, right? One of the rules is called what? They can give a judgment on a hearing, full-blown hearing. They can give an order, right? Almost like an injunctive relief. Or they give an advisory opinion. What does advisory opinion mean? Well, sometimes the General Assembly, which is the 193 member states, might actually put together a question and send it over to the ICJ and say, "Hey, what kind of stuff on the question? Because we got a dispute going on between Great Britain and the Chagos Moors, right?" So before they go to the ICJ, the member states, the 193 member states say, "Let's talk about it first. We're seeking arbitration to help this dispute" that these two disputing states are having. Great Britain, right, and the Mauritius state, right? So the General Assembly can put together questions and send it over to the ICJ and say, "We need your opinion on this matter." Before it actually comes to you seeking a judgment or an order, "How about you just give us an advisory opinion?" That's exactly what the ICJ did. They came back and they gave an advisory opinion, and they delivered that opinion to who? They delivered it to the General Assembly, which is the 193 member states, right? And the General Assembly then turns around and gives it to who? Great Britain and the Mauritius state. But yet, Great Britain and the Mauritius state never themselves went in front of the ICJ. You gotta catch what I'm saying. There was never an actual bilateral dispute where Great Britain and the Mauritius came together in a dispute a versus and went to the ICJ as two disputing states. Instead, they stayed on the sideline, were seeking arbitration first. So it was arbitration, and at some point, they gotta seek what? Some type of adjudication, right? To get a judicial settlement from either order or judgment. But the advisory opinion is almost like a starting point, right? To give the two parties, plus the 193 member states, an opportunity to now seek some type of arbitration, to sell it politically first before it gets settled judicially. That's what you gotta catch here, alright? Okay. Alright, so now, Moors, you gotta be patient with me. We're gonna watch a video from the International Court of Justice called "UN Call for UK to End Administration of the Biot territory, Chagos, February 2019." Okay, you can find that on YouTube, alright? This video is approximately an hour and five minutes long. The Moors have to be patient and watch this. Why do I say that? Because first of all, we as Moors have our own counsel course. We have to learn how the ICJ takes care of their proceedings, right? Where they preside over a case where they're looking for an advisory opinion, a judgment, or an order, Moors to their counsel court need to understand the procedures. We need to understand the legal arguments that the two parties are introducing. What's their legal argument? What are they introducing as exhibits? You know what the exhibits are? The law itself, international law, such as Resolution 1514, that I talk to the Moors about all the time, right? Such as Resolution 2625, I talk to the Moors about this all the time, right? This is what they're gonna talk about. That's the legal argument. That's the legal defense. So you'll learn more about international law because the Moors have to learn how to sit on their own panel, their own bench, as judges, right? Me, as Justice Jay Bay, I learned from the ICJ, right? I learned how they do all their procedures. I learned the vernacular they have. Understand the proceedings or how they put together their International Court of Justice adjudications when they set forth, right? The text of it, I go back and read it. I break it down. We as Moors have to learn how to be the competent authority of our own counsel courts. And the best people to learn from is the ICJ through our counsel courts. But also keep in mind, at some point, we as Moroccan states, right? Now we're putting back the Empire Morocco, guess where we're gonna end up more than likely? At the ICJ. So this gives us a kind of an insight, understanding of what happens at the ICJ when you're trying to do what? Decolonize. When you're seeking what? Self-determination. You're seeking what? Self-government within what? Your own territory, under your Udi-Posidated State, as well as the Empire Morocco as a territory itself. The state is called the Empire Morocco, right? That's what's recognized in your treaties. But the only way for us to take it back, we gotta take it back one territory at a time under Udi-Posidated Jurists. So let's learn how the other Moors have been doing it since 1960. Keep in mind, the Africans are Moors too, right? So we're way behind as Moors, way behind. So we need to drop the arrogance, and we need to have some humility and learn. Because you're not gonna learn this from your Moors American teachers, what I'm about to show you. You're not gonna learn this from your sheiks, your grand sheiks, or your national grand sheiks. The NAACP is not gonna teach you what you're about to learn. You're not gonna learn this at the HBCUs. You're not gonna learn this at your churches, and you ain't not gonna learn this at the mosque. You're not. So if the Moors ask you to seek in their freedom, you want your sovereignty independence, you wanna uplift fallen humanity, then you should pay attention, right? So my recommendation is, at least watch the video one good time, right? And then come back, watch it again, and start breaking down a few notes of what the ICJ is talking about, alright? And maybe once or twice, I might pause it myself and get into some interpretation. But I'd rather not really stop it, but I might stop it maybe once or twice. Okay, it's an hour and five minutes, okay? Let's pay attention. This is the case of 2019 with these Moors, right? These Moors took the UK, right? To try to get an advisory opinion from the General Assembly of the United Nations, right? Let's get the concept and context. These Moors right here, the Mauritius, asked the United Nations for assistance in dealing with a territorial claim, right? Under self-determination, right? Udi-Posidated Jurists, the Mauritius government wanted their island back, was the Chagos Island, alright? You gotta understand this, okay? Alright, this is an hour, we're gonna listen to at least an hour of this, okay? We have to learn from this, Moors. This is our future, right here. This is the future.
The sitting is open. The court metes today pursuant to Article 67 of the statute to deliver its advisory opinion on the request submitted by the General Assembly of the United Nations on the question of the legal consequences of the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius in 1965. By a letter dated 23 June 2017, the Secretary-General of the United Nations officially communicated to the court the decision taken by the General Assembly to submit the following questions for an advisory opinion as set out in the final paragraph of Resolution 71/292, adopted by the General Assembly on 22 June 2017. I quote: A: Was the process of decolonization of Mauritius lawfully completed when Mauritius was granted independence in 1968, following the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius? And have in regard to international law, including obligations reflected in General Assembly Resolutions 1514 of 14 December 1960, 266 of 16 December 1965, 2232 of 20 December 1966, and 2357 of 19 December 1967. B: What are the consequences under international law, including obligations reflected in the above-mentioned resolutions, arising from the continued administration by the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland of the Chagos Archipelago, including with respect to the inability of Mauritius to implement a program for the resettlement on the Chagos Archipelago of its nationals, in particular those of Chagosian origin and of boot? In accordance with usual practice, I shall not read out the introductory paragraphs of the opinion which set out the main elements in the procedural history of the proceedings. I shall also omit or summarize some of the other paragraphs of the opinion. I shall accordingly begin the reading of the advisory opinion at paragraph 27. The full text of the opinion will of course be available... The full text of the opinion will of course be available at the close of the sitting. The court first recalls the event is leading to the adoption of the request for the advisory opinion. In particular, it notes that between 1814 and 1965, the Chagos archipelago was administered by the United Kingdom as a dependency of the colony of Mauritius. On 8 November 1965, the United Kingdom established a new colony known as the British Indian Ocean Territory or by its acronym as the BIOT, consisting of the Chagos archipelago detached from Mauritius and certain other islands detached from Seychelles. On 7 August 1967, general elections were held in Mauritius and the political parties in favor of independence prevailed. On 12 March 1968, Mauritius became an independent state and was admitted to membership in the United Nations on 26 April 1968. Section 111, Paragraph 1 of the 1968 Constitution of Mauritius, promulgated by the United Kingdom government before independence on 4 March 1968, defined Mauritius as, and I quote, "the territories which immediately before the 12th March 1968 constituted the colony of Mauritius," end of quote. This definition did not include the Chagos archipelago in the territory of Mauritius. On 23 June 2017, the General Assembly adopted Resolution 71/292, requesting an advisory opinion from the court. Having recalled the event is leading to the adoption of that request, the court turns to the consideration of the questions of jurisdiction and discretion. When the court sees it of a request for an advisory opinion, it must first consider whether it has jurisdiction to give the opinion requested and if so, whether there is any reason why the court should, in the exercise of its discretion, decline to answer the request. The court's jurisdiction to give an advisory opinion is based on Article 65, Paragraph 1 of its statute, which provides that, and I quote, "The court may give an advisory opinion on any legal question at the request of whatever body may be authorized by or in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations to make such a request," end of quote. The court notes that under Article 96, Paragraph 1 of the Charter, the General Assembly may request the International Court of Justice to give an advisory opinion on any legal question. In the present proceedings, the first question put to the court is whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed, having regard to international law, when it was granted independence following the separation of the Chagos archipelago. The second question, related to the consequences arising under international law from the continued administration by the United Kingdom of the Chagos archipelago. The court considers that a request from the General Assembly for an advisory opinion to examine a situation by reference to international law concerns a legal question. The court therefore concludes that the request has been made in accordance with the Charter and that the two questions submitted to it are legal in character. The court accordingly has jurisdiction to give the advisory opinion requested by Resolution 71/292 of the General Assembly. The fact that the court has jurisdiction does not mean, however, that it is obliged to exercise it. The discretion whether or not to respond to a request for an advisory opinion exists so as to protect the integrity of the court's judicial function as the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. The court is nevertheless mindful of the fact that its answer to a request for an advisory opinion represents its participation in the activities of the organization and in principle should not be refused. Thus, the consistent jurisprudence of the court is that only compelling reasons may lead the court to refuse its opinion in response to a request falling within its jurisdiction. The court must satisfy itself as to the propriety of the exercise of its judicial function in the present proceedings. It therefore must give careful consideration as to whether there are compelling reasons for it to decline to respond to the request from the General Assembly. Some participantes in the present proceedings have argued that there are compelling reasons for the court to decline to give the advisory opinion requested. One of the reasons raised by those participants is that advisory proceedings are not suitable for determination of complex and disputed factual issues. The court observes that an abundance of material has been presented before it, including a voluminous dossier from the United Nations. Moreover, many participantes have submitted written statements and written comments and made oral statements which contain information relevant to answering the questions. The court is therefore satisfied that there is in the present proceedings sufficient information on the facts before it for the court to give the requested opinion. Accordingly, the court cannot decline to answer the questions put to it for this reason. A second reason raised by some participantes for the court to decline to give an advisory opinion is that the advisory opinion requested would not assist the General Assembly in the proper exercise of its functions. The court considers that it's not for the court itself to determine the usefulness of its response to the requesting organ. Rather, it should be left to the requesting organ, the General Assembly in this case, to determine whether it needs the opinion for the proper performance of its functions. In the Advisory Opinion on Legal Consequences of the Construction of a Wall in the occupied Palestinian territory, the court stated that, and I quote, "it cannot substitute its assessment of the usefulness of the opinion requested for that of the organ that seeks such an opinion." It follows that in the present proceedings, the court cannot decline to answer the questions posed to it by the General Assembly in Resolution 71/292 on the ground that its opinion would not assist the General Assembly in the performance of its functions. Certain participantes have also argued that an advisory opinion by the court would reopen the findings of the arbitral tribunal in the arbitration regarding the Chagos marine protected area that are binding on Mauritius and the United Kingdom. The court recalls in this connection that its opinion is given to states, is given not to states, but to the organ which is entitled to request it. The court observes that the principle of res judicata-
Okay, let me pause it right there. You notice what he just said? The advisory opinion is not being given to who? The states. It's being given to who? The General Assembly, right? You have to understand why Great Britain has yet to give up the Chagos island just yet. It's because Great Britain and the Mauritius government still needs to go in front of the ICJ and settle this dispute. This advisory opinion came out in the year 2019. Now we're in the year 2023, it's been five years. So the Mauritius government needs to bring the UK to the ICJ. The ICJ is telling you right here, this advisory opinion is not the way you settle an actual contentious dispute. Therefore, we're handing this advisory opinion to the General Assembly and not to the United Kingdom and Mauritius as the states. You gotta catch what he's saying, alright?
...recluded from rendering an advisory opinion. When answering a question submitted for an opinion, the court will consider any relevant judicial or arbitral decision. In any event, the court further notes that the issues that were determined by the arbitral tribunal in the arbitration regarding the Chagos marine protected area are not the same as those that are before the court in this proceedings. It follows from the foregoing that the court cannot decline to answer the questions on this ground. Finally, some participantes have argued that there is a bilateral dispute between Mauritius and the United Kingdom regarding sovereignty over the Chagos archipelago and that this dispute is at the core of the advisory proceedings. Certain participantes have contended that the dispute over sovereignty which arose in the 1980s in bilateral relations is the real dispute that motivated the request. The court recalls with respect to this argument that there would be a compelling reason to decline to give an advisory opinion when such a reply, and I quote, "would have the effect of circumventing the principle that a state is not obliged to allow its disputes to be submitted to judicial settlement without its consent," end of quote. The court notes that the questions put to it by the General Assembly relate to the decolonization of Mauritius. The General Assembly has not sought the court's opinion to resolve a territorial dispute between two states. Rather, the purpose of the request is for the General Assembly to receive the court's assistance so that it may be guided in the discharge of its functions relating to the decolonization of Mauritius.
He confirmed it, you see? He said, listen, this advisory opinion from the ICJ is only to help the General Assembly members of the 193 states, right? It was not an order or a judgment given directly to Great Britain or Mauritius. It was not given to the states, it was given to the General Assembly. You gotta catch what he's saying here, alright? So a lot of people think that the UK would just strong-arm it and then pay attention to the ICJ's advisory opinion. The reality is, anytime the ICJ sets forth an advisory opinion, it's still binding on the parties, okay? But when the ICJ handed it to the General Assembly, the General Assembly is supposed to take it and hand it to the UK and say, look, the General Assembly wants you to remove yourself from the territory of the island and the ICJ's opinion says you should do it as well, so you should accept the ICJ's opinion in good faith, right? But did the United Kingdom leave? No, but we'll talk about that more as to why they haven't left just yet, right? Everything needs to be full disclosure, we'll talk about that today, alright? Let's continue.
The court observes that the General Assembly has a long and consistent record in seeking to bring colonialism to an end. From the earliest days of the United Nations, the General Assembly has played an active role in matters of decolonization. Article 1, Paragraph 2 of the Charter establishes as one of the purposes of the United Nations respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples. In this regard, the court noticed that Chapter 11 of the Charter of the United Nations relates to non-self-governing territories and that the first article in that chapter, Article 73, provides that administering powers of non-self-governing territories are required inter alia to transmit regularly to the Secretary-General specific information relating to the territories for which they are respectively responsible.
You see there, moors? What do I have on the board? Okay. Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 11, right? Article 73 and 74, right? About Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories. And you just heard the president of the ICJ talk about Article 73, Section E, right? E is an echo, right? That all the colonial powers, right? The colonial powers, the political term they like is they're the administration power, the administrative power, right? They don't wanna be called colonies. They're supposed to give the Secretary-General constant notifications about what's going on with a territory that's trying to decolonize, you see? They're trying to rise up, their self-determination. This is the International Court of Justice talking about this. This is what moors are gonna hear when we go to the ICJ. This is what the counsel court is gonna tell the United States of America, the United States and the several union states. Here regionally, our counsel court is gonna talk like this to the United States. But if we have to go to the ICJ, this is how the ICJ is gonna talk to the United States. You gotta see what's happening here. The moors have been decolonizing since the 1960s. We're in the year 2023. The charter's been out since 1945 and the ICJ judge is sitting here talking about the charter right now that the Moors Americans don't have no clue about. But the answer to the test has been right in front of our faces the whole time 'cause the United Nations headquarters is in Manhattan, New York. We should be ashamed of ourselves. If this was a marathon regarding decolonization of moors, the moors in the West would be at the back of the marathon, the very back of it. But that's alright, we gonna use that kick. We gonna kick, we gonna get to the front, right? We gonna enforce our treaties, let's continue.
The court therefore concludes that the opinion has been requested on the matter of decolonization which is of particular concern to the United Nations. The issues raised by the request are located in the broader frame of reference of decolonization, including the General Assembly's role therein from which those issues are inseparable. Moreover, the court observes that there may be differences of views on legal questions in advisory proceedings. However, the fact that the court may have to pronounce on legal issues on which divergent views have been expressed by Mauritius and the United Kingdom does not mean that by replying to the request, the court is dealing with a bilateral dispute. In these circumstances, the court does not consider that to give the opinion requested would have the effect of circumventing the principle of consent by a state to the judicial settlement of its dispute with another state. The court therefore cannot, in the exercise of its discretion, decline to give the opinion on that ground. In light of the foregoing, the court concludes that there are no compelling reasons for it to decline to give the opinion requested by the General Assembly. Turning now to the factual context, the separation of the Chagos archipelago from Mauritius. The court addresses, first of all, these questions, the questions submitted to it by the General Assembly. and it means it important to examine the factual circumstances surrounding the separation of the Archipelago from Mauritius, as well as the question is relating to the removal of the Chagosians from the territory. In this regard, the court noticed that prior to the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius, there were formal discussions between the United Kingdom and the United States on the one hand and between the government of the United Kingdom and representatives of the colony of Mauritius on the other. With respect to the discussions-
Did you hear what the ICJ said? The ICJ is reviewing what? All the correspondence letters that took place between the United States, right, the UK, and the Mauritius government. They went back to look at what? The history, right? All the documentary evidence of all the correspondences going on. Why is this important to note? Because we, especially Moroccan states, right, we got seven Moroccan states at this time in the year 2023. Every time we send correspondence to the United States, at some point, the ICJ is gonna look at all those correspondences we sent the ICJ. All the mediation letters, all the arbitration notifications we've given them. Every document that we sent to the United States, the ICJ is gonna get a copy of it. They're gonna review it. They wanna see the competency of the Moroccan nationals and the competency of the officers of said state. This is what we got to understand. The ICJ is gonna get access to all the documents. Now imagine if they've taken a look at Moors American documents. They say, first of all, Moors Americans can't even appear in front of our court because there ain't no such thing as Moors Americans. However, the treaties recognize who? Moroccans. So the Moroccans can stand in front of the court, right? So the Moroccans have to understand, we have to be the competent authority with our pen, right? Our documents that we send to the United States and whatever they send back, and it goes back and forth, all is gonna be in front of your own Constable Court at one point to review, as well as gonna be right in front of the ICJ. So you must keep in mind, all of your documents that you send to the United States must be based in international law. The ICJ is not gonna sit up there and read the Constitution of the United States. That's not, that's domestic law. The ICJ is not gonna read nothing about the State of Virginia statutes. The ICJ is not gonna read nothing about the Supreme Court's decisions of the United States federal corporation. No! All the thing they're gonna read is the laws of international law. That's the legal argument. That's the legal defense. It's only about international law. You don't read nothing else. That's it. And the Moors Americans have been derelict in understanding this simple understanding. You must study international law. If you ever, ever want to decolonize. Let's continue.
Between the United Kingdom and the United States, the court noticed that in February 1964, talks commenced between the governments of the United Kingdom and the United States on the strategic use of certain small British-administered islanders in the Indian Ocean for defense purposes. During these talks, the United States expressed an interest in establishing a military communication facility and the work of here. The discussions between the United Kingdom and the United States led to the conclusion of the 1966 agreement for the establishment of a military base by the United States on the Chagos Archipelago. With regard to the discussions between the government of the United Kingdom and representatives of the colony of Mauritius, the court noticed that on 23 September 1965, a meeting on defense matters was held at Lancaster House between representatives of the colony of Mauritius, including Premier Rangulam and three other Mauritian ministers and the United Kingdom Secretary of State for the Colonies. At the end of that meeting, an agreement was reached on the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago on the basis of certain specific undertakings that the Secretary of State for the Colonies would recommend to the UK Cabinet, including on the question of compensation and on the return of the islanders to Mauritius when they were no longer needed for defense purposes. Subsequently, the Premier of Mauritius informed the Secretary of State for the Colonies that the proposals put forward by the United Kingdom were acceptable in principle, but that he would discuss the matter with his other ministerial colleagues. On 24 September 1965, the government of the United Kingdom announced that it was in favor of granting independence to Mauritius. On 5 November 1965, the governor of Mauritius informed the United Kingdom Secretary of State that the Mauritius Council of Ministers had, and I quote, "confirmed agreement to the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago," end of quote. Having recalled the discussions that led to the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago from the colony of Mauritius, the court then considers the situation of the Chagosians. The court noticed that following the 1966 agreement between the United Kingdom and the United States in the years between 1967 and 1973, those inhabitants of the Chagos Archipelago who had left the island were prevented from returning. The other inhabitants were also during those years forcibly removed and prevented from returning to the islands. On 15 April 1971, the pilot commissioner enacted the Immigration Ordinance of 1971, which made it unlawful for any person to enter or remain in the Chagos Archipelago without a permit. It also provided for the commissioner to make an order directing the removal of such a person from the Chagos Archipelago. In the oral proceedings before the court, the United Kingdom reiterated that, and I quote, "that it fully accepted that the manner in which the Chagosians were removed from the Chagos Archipelago and the way they were treated thereafter was shameful and wrong and that it deeply regret, regretted that fact," end of quote. On 4 September 1972, by virtue of an agreement concluded between Mauritius and the United Kingdom, Mauritius accepted payment of the sum of 650,000 pounds in full and final discharge of the United Kingdom's undertakings given in 1965 to meet the cost of resettlement of persons removed from the Chagos Archipelago. On 7 July 1982, an agreement was concluded between the governments of Mauritius and the United Kingdom for the payment by the United Kingdom of the sum of 4 million pounds on an excruciating basis with no admission of liability on the part of the United Kingdom, and I quote, "in full and final settlement of all claims whatsoever of the kind referred to in Article 2 of this agreement against the United Kingdom by or on behalf of the in wa, that is, the Chagosians," end of quote. The sum of approximately 4 million pounds paid by the United Kingdom was disbursed to about 1,344 islanders between 1983 and 1984. As a condition for collecting the funds, the islanders were required to sign or to place a thumbprint on a form renouncing the right to return to the Chagos Archipelago. On 20 December 2012, the United Kingdom announced a review of its policy on resettlement of the Chagosians who were forcibly removed from or prevented from returning to the Chagos Archipelago. A disability study carried out between 2014 and 2015 was commissioned by the Bureau of Administration to analyze the different options for resettlement in the Chagos Archipelago. The disability study concluded that resettlement was possible although there would be significant challenges, including high and very uncertain costs and long-term liabilities for the United Kingdom taxpayer. Therefore, on 16 November 2016, the United Kingdom decided against resettlement. To date, the Chagosians remain dispersed in several countries, including the United Kingdom, Mauritius, and Seychelles. By virtue of the United Kingdom law and judicial decisions of that country, they are not allowed to return to the Chagos Archipelago. Having reviewed the factual background of the present request for an advisory opinion, the court examines the two questions put by the General Assembly. Some participantes have asked the court to reformulate both questions or to interpret them restrictively. The court considers that there is no need for it to reformulate the questions submitted to it for an advisory opinion in these proceedings. Indeed, the first question is whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed in 1968 having regard to international law following the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from its territory in 1965. The General Assembly's reference to certain resolutions which it adopted during this period does not, in the court's view, prejudge either their legal content or scope. In question A, the General Assembly asks the court to examine certain events which occurred between 1965 and 1968 and which fall within the framework of the process of decolonization of Mauritius as a non-self-governing territory. It did not submit to the court a bilateral dispute over sovereignty which might exist between the United Kingdom and Mauritius. In question B, which is clearly linked to question A, the court is asked to state the consequences under international law of the continued administration by the United Kingdom of the Chagos Archipelago. By referring in this way to international law, the General Assembly necessarily had in mind the consequences for the subjects of that law, including states. It is for the court to state the law applicable to the factual situation referred to it by the General Assembly in its request for an advisory opinion. There is thus no need for it to interpret restrictively the questions put to it by the General Assembly. When the court states the law in the exercise of its advisory function, it lends its assistance to the General Assembly in the solution of a problem confronting the assembly. In giving its advisory opinion, the court is not interfering with the exercise of the General Assembly's own functions. The court turns to the first question put to it by the General Assembly, namely whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed having regard to international law. In order to pronounce on whether the process of decolonization of Mauritius was lawfully completed having regard to international law, the court will determine, first, the relevant period of time for the purpose of identifying the applicable rules of international law, and secondly, the content of that law. In addition, since the General Assembly has referred to some of the resolutions it adopted, the court, in determining the obligations reflected in these resolutions, will have to examine the function of the General Assembly in conducting the process of decolonization. Concerning the relevant period of time, the court notes that in question A, the General Assembly situates the process of decolonization of Mauritius in the period between the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from its territory in 1965 and its independence in 1968. It's therefore by reference to this period that the court is required to identify the rules of international law that are applicable to that process. The court is of the view that while its determination of the applicable law must focus on the period from 1965 to 1968, this will not prevent it, particularly when customary rules are at issue, from considering the evolution of the law on self-determination since the adoption of the Charter of the United Nations and of Resolution 1514 of 14 December 1960, entitled Declaration on the Granting of Independence to Colonial Countries.
So as you see, the International Court of Justice is invoking international law, the rule of law, right? So right now, the President of the ICJ, right, Judge Yusuf, he's invoking the Charter, right, he's talking about Chapter 11 of the Charter, Article 73. Now he's talking about what? The United Nations Resolution, what? 1514, you see? He ain't talking about nobody's constitution. He ain't talking about nobody's internal law. He's invoking international law. He already knows you have a constitution. He knows you have internal law. He's invoking international law. All states are bound to the rule and the customs of international law. That must be understood. Listen.
Indeed, state practice and opinion juris, that is, the acceptance of that practice as law, both of which are under Article 38 of the Statute of the Court, are consolidated and confirmed gradually over time. The court may also rely on legal instrumentals which postdate the period in question when those instrumentals confirm or interpret pre-existing rules or principles. Regarding the rules of international law, the court will have to determine the nature, content, and scope of the right to self-determination applicable to the process of decolonization of Mauritius, a non-self-governing territory recognized as such from 1946 onwards, both in the United Nations practice and by the administering power itself. The court is conscious that the right to self-determination as a fundamental human right has a broad scope of application. However, to answer the question put to it by the General Assembly, the court will confine itself in this advisory opinion to analyzing the right to self-determination in the context of decolonization. The court begins by recalling that respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination- The court begins by recalling that respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples is one of the purposes of the United Nations as set out in its charter. Such a purpose concerns in particular Chapter 11 of the Charter, entitled Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories, under which the members of the United Nations, which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose peoples have not yet attained a full measure of self-government, are obliged to develop the self-government of those peoples. In the court's view, it follows that the legal regime of non-self-governing territories, as set out in Chapter 11 of the Charter, was based on the progressive development of the institutions of these peoples, so as to lead the population concerned to exercise their right to self-determination. Having made the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples one of the purposes of the United Nations, the Charter included provisions that would enable non-self-governing territories ultimately to govern themselves. It is in this context that the court must ascertain when the right to self-determination crystallizes as a customary rule binding on all states. The adoption of Resolution 1514 of 14 December 1960 represents a defining moment in the consolidation of state practice on decolonization. Prior to that resolution, the General Assembly had affirmed on several occasions the right to self-determination through various resolutions and a number of non-self-governing territories had acceded to independence. General Assembly Resolution 1514 clarifies the content and scope of the right to self-determination. The court notes that the decolonization process accelerated in 1960, with 18 countries, including 17 in Africa, gaining independence during that year. During the 1960s, the peoples of an additional 28 non-self-governing territories exercised their right to self-determination and achieved independence. In the court's view, there is a clear relationship between Resolution 1514 and the process of decolonization following its adoption. As the court has noted in its previous case law, General Assembly resolutions, even if they are not binding, may sometimes have normative value. They can, in certain circumstances, provide evidence important for establishing the existence of a rule or the emergence of an opinion juris. The court considers that although Resolution 1514 is formally a recommendation, it has a declaratory character with regard to the right to self-determination as a customary norm, in view of its content and the conditions of its adoption. The resolution was adopted by 89 voters with nine abstentions. None of the states participating in the vote contested the existence of the right of peoples to self-determination. Certain states justified their abstention on the basis of the time required for the implementation of such a right. The wording used in Resolution 1514 has a normative character, insofar as it affirms that, and I quote, "all peoples have the right to self-determination," end of quote. Its preamble proclaims, and I quote, "the necessity of bringing to a speedy and unconditional end colonialism in all its forms and manifestations," end of quote. This resolution further provides that, and I quote, "immediate status shall be taken in trust and non-self-governing territories or all other territories which have not yet attained independence, to transfer all powers to the peoples of those territories without any conditions or reservations, in accordance with their freely expressive will and desire," end of quote. In order to prevent any dismemberment of any non-self-governing territories, Paragraph 6 of Resolution 1514 provides that, and I quote, "any attempt aimed at the partial or total disruption of the national unity and territorial integrity of a country is incompatible with the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations," end of quote. Article 1, Common to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights and to the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, adopted on 16 December 1966 by General Assembly Resolution 2208, reaffirms the right of all peoples to self-determination. The nature and scope of the right to self-determination of peoples, including respect for the national unity and territorial integrity of a country, were reiterated in the Declaration on Principles of International Law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among the states in accordance with the Charter of the United Nations. This declaration was annexed to General Assembly Resolution 2625, which was adopted by consensus in 1970. By recognizing the right to self-determination as one of the basic principles of international law, the declaration confirmed its normative character under customary international law. The means of implementing the right to self-
So, so as the Moores can see, I've talked about this, the AMPAC Study Session, Resolution what, 2625, the year 1970. This is the International Court of Justice talking about this, holding the colonist, you notice early on he called the UK colonist, right? He also called the administrative power, right? But he also called him colonist, right? But now he's quoting United Nations Resolution 2625 of 1970. This is what the Moores should have been using for decades. The Charter's been out since 1945. These United Nations resolutions have been out since the 60s and the 70s, for God's sake. Moores have been decolonizing everywhere on planet Earth, right? Let's keep talking. Pay attention to what he's about to say next, listen.
Determination in a non-self-governing territory were set out in Principle 6 of General Assembly Resolution 1541, adopted on 15 December 1960.
So now he just mentioned what, Resolution what, 1541 of 1960, we talked about it, Principle number 6. Remember, I went over that, right? Where did I talk about? The emergence of an independent state, right, they gave you three options, right, in Resolution 1541 of 1960. It gave indigenous people three options to choose, right, under Principle number 6. It was what, emergence of a what, independent state? It was what, free association with an independent state? And number 3 was what, integration with an independent state? Now that's what he's mentioning. Those are the three options, you see? We've gone over this AMPAC Study Session. All right, listen.
And I quote, "A non-self-governing territory can't decide to have reached a full measure of self-government by, A, emergence as a sovereign independent state, B, free association with an independent state, or C, integration with an independent state," end of quote. The court records that while the exercise of self-determination may be achieved through one of the options laid down by Resolution 1541, it must be the expression of the free and genuine will of the people concerned. However, the right of self-determination leaves the United Nations General Assembly a measure of discretion with respect to the forms and procedures by which that right is to be realized. The right to self-determination under customary international law does not impose a specific mechanism for its implementation in all instances. Some participantes have argued that the customary status of the right to self-determination did not entail an obligation to implement that right within the boundary of the non-self-governing territory.
Hear what he said? You gotta pay attention where he said, we're gonna go back and read this subsection of the case itself, right here. What he's talking about right now is a colonist said, well, yeah, there can be some self-determination, but not within the borders of the colonist states themselves, right? They want the Moores to be in a status of interstate, meaning integrated into the colonies, right, similarly like the Indians do, that Indian reservation, United States gets to govern over them, that's called interstate or integrated status. So the colonies are trying to make up their own rules, but it's not working, right? So if you keep listening, listen to Justice Yousaf tell them, yeah, that's not a part of the rule of international law, that's not the custom of international law either. That's what he's getting ready to tell them, right? Now keep in mind, it's advisory opinion. But he's letting all the colonies know colonialism's coming to an end, right, speedy end, right? You gotta understand what's happening. Like I said, we're gonna go back and read a little bit his, as well, out of the advisory opinion itself, but pay attention to the words.
The court records that the right to self-determination of the people concerned is defined by reference to the entirety of a non-self-governing territory, as stated in the aforementioned Paragraph 6 of Resolution 1514. Both state practice and opinion juris at the relevant time confirm the customary law character of the right to territorial integrity of a non-self-governing territory as a corollary of the right to self-determination. No example has been brought to the attention of the court in which, following the adoption of Resolution 1514, the General Assembly or any other organ of the United Nations has considered it as lawful, the detachment by the administering power of part of a non-self-governing territory for the purpose of maintaining it, maintaining it under its colonial rule.
You see what Judge Yousaf just told them? He said, you colonies are trying to make it seem like all indigenous people have to be in some Indian reservation status, that they can't really become an external sovereign state in the same territory where the colonies are also domiciled, you see? Such as France, United States of America, Great Britain want to say, well, indigenous people, they can get their independence on the islands, they can get in Africa, but they can't get it right where the Europeans also domiciled, you see? So Judge Yousaf tell them straight up, there's no rule, there's no customary international law that supports that legal argument, right? So he tells them straight up, I have yet to see anything in our court proceedings, there's no case law, and I never saw it through the Trusteeship Council of the United Nations, right? The Trusteeship Council was overseeing all the trust territories, right, in the United Nations, from 1946 up until 1994. And the Trusteeship Council of the United Nations never allow colonists to maintain colonialism in any territory between 1946 and 1994. So the judge right now is saying, there is no history, right? The court has never held any type of ruling that allowed colonies to maintain colonialism in any territory on planet Earth. So therefore, the rule and the custom shall be applicable even in territories where the colonies live themselves, such as the United States of America. Keep in mind, the United States of America is located where? In Morocco, the Empire of Morocco. So ICJ has already warned them, keep in mind, this case came out what, what year? 2019, this is recent. This is why the United States of America is gonna start backing up real quick off of who? The competent Moroccan nationals of their Moroccan states. This is about state-on-state dispute. This is why the Moorish Americans, because they're never decolonized, will get their rights, because there's no such thing as Moorish Americans. Their treaties recognize Moroccans, all right? But Judge Yousaf is telling the colonies straight up, you might as well get ready, get prepared because these Moores bring these cases to this court, they're gonna be enforcing international law on top of the fact they got treaties, all right? Let's listen.
It is have consistently emphasized that respect for the territorial integrity of a non-self-governing territory is a key element of the exercise of the right to self-determination under international law. The court considers that the peoples of non-self-governing territories are entitled to exercise their right to self-determination in relation to their territory as a whole, the integrity of which must be respected by the administering power.
Hear that? The will of the people, but the people must seek what? A declaration of independence first. Draft their constitution that has their three branches of government, right? Deposit, register that constitution with the United Nations in the corner, Article 102 of the Charter, right? Start to become parties, contracting parties to the Charter to recognize the Charter's provisions, right? Then you also have to become contracting parties to your own treaties, that way you can enforce them. And what is the nationality of the people that's enforcing the treaties? Moroccans, not Moorish Americans, there's no such thing as Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans lives in a church organization, period. The Baptists, they ain't saying Baptists are nationality. Moorish Americans keep saying Moorish Americans are nationality, it is not, it's a religious status. Under Religious Corporation Act, look up Illinois statue, 805 I L C S 110, I'll say it again, look up Illinois statues of 805 I L C S 110, and what's all about? Religious Corporation Act, and that's what the Moorish Science Temple Incorporated is listed under as a charter underneath the Charter of the state of Illinois. So we gotta stop the cap acting like the temple is a state, and it is not, it's a corporation, a religious organization. We gotta stop playing games with Moores' lives. You gotta understand, in the ICJ, they're saying, these Moores are entitled to their self-determination, but unfortunately, the Moores suffer from cognitive dissonance. They keep ignoring this simple rule and the customary norms of international law. You gotta tell your Moorish American teachers to go to the back, because we moving forward with international law, that must be understood. Let's continue.
It follows that any detachment by the administering power of part of a non-self-governing territory, unless based on the freely expressive and genuine will of the people of the territory concerned, is contrary to the right to self-determination. In the court's view, the law on self-determination constitutes the applicable international law during the period under consideration, namely between 1965 and 1968. The court noted in its advisory opinion on Namibia the consolidation of that law. Having determined the applicable international law, the court proceeds to examine the functions of the General Assembly during the process of decolonization. the functions of the General Assembly during the process of the colonization. The General Assembly has played a crucial role in the work of the United Nations on the colonization, in particular since the adoption of Resolution 1514. It has overseen the implementation of the obligations of member states in this regard, as laid down in Chapter 11 of the Charter and as reflected in the practice which has developed within the organization. It is in this context that the Court is asked in question A to consider in its analysis of international law applicable to the process of the colonization of Mauritius. The obligation is reflected in General Assembly Resolution 2066 of 16 December 1965, 2232 of 20 December 1966, and 2357 of 19 December 1967. In Resolution 2066 of 16 December 1965, entitled "Question of Mauritius", the General Assembly having noted, and I quote, "With deep concern that any step taken by the administering power to detach certain islands from the territory of Mauritius for the purpose of establishing a military base would be in contravention of the Declaration and in particular of paragraph six thereof," end of quote. The General Assembly in the operative part of the text invites, and I quote, "The administering power to take no action which would dismember the territory of Mauritius and violate its territorial integrity," end of quote. In the Court's view, by inviting the United Kingdom to comply with its international obligations in conducting the process of the colonization of Mauritius, the General Assembly acted within the framework of the Charter and within the scope of its functions, of the functions assigned to it to oversee the application of the right to self determination. The General Assembly assumed those functions in order to supervise the implementation of obligations incumbent upon administering powers under the Charter. It does establish a special committee tasked with examining the factors that would enable it to decide, and I quote, "Whether any territory is or is not a territory whose people have not yet attained a full measure of self-government," end of quote. It has been the Assembly's consistent practice to adopt a resolution to pronounce on the specific situation of any non-self-governing territory. Thus, immediately after the adoption of Resolution 1514, the Assembly established the Committee of Twenty Four, tasked with monitoring the implementation of that resolution and making suggestions and recommendations their own. The General Assembly also monitors the means by which the free and genuine will of the people of a non-self-governing territory is expressed, including the formulation of questions submitted for popular consultation. The General Assembly has consistently called upon administering powers to respect the territorial integrity of non-self-governing territories, especially after the adoption of Resolution 1514 of 14 December 1960. The Court turns at this point to the circumstances relating to the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius to determine whether it was carried out in accordance with international law. The Court begins by recalling the legal status of Mauritius before its independence. Following the conclusion of the 1814 Treaty of Paris, the island of Mauritius and the dependencies of Mauritius, including the Chagos Archipelago, were administered without interruption by the United Kingdom. This is how the whole of Mauritius, including its dependencies, came to appear on the list of non-self-governing territories drawn up by the United Nations General Assembly in 1946. It was on this basis that the United Kingdom regularly provided the General Assembly with information relating to the existing conditions in that territory in accordance with Article 73 of the Charter. Therefore, at the time of its detachment from Mauritius in 1965, the Chagos Archipelago was clearly an integral part of that non-self-governing territory. In the Lancaster House Agreement of 23 September 1965, the Premier and other representatives of Mauritius, which was still under the authority of the United Kingdom as administering power, agreed in principle to the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago from the territory of Mauritius. This agreement in principle was given on condition that the archipelago could not be ceded to any third party and would be returning to Mauritius at a later date, a condition which was accepted at the time by the United Kingdom. The Court observes that when the Council of Ministers agreed in principle to the detachment from Mauritius of the Chagos Archipelago, Mauritius was as a colony under the authority of the United Kingdom. In the Court's view, it's not possible to talk of an international agreement when one of the parties to it, Mauritius, which is said to have ceded the territory to the United Kingdom, was under the authority of the latter. The Court is of the view that heightened scrutiny should be given to the issue of consent in a situation where a part of non-self-governing territory is separated to create a new colony. Having reviewed the circumstances in which the Council of Ministers of the colony of Mauritius agreed in principle to the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago on the basis of the Lancaster House Agreement, the Court considers that this detachment was not based on the free and genuine expression of the will of the people concerned. A latest Resolution 2066 of 16 December 1965, adopted a few weeks after the detachment of the Chagos Archipelago, the General Assembly deemed it appropriate to recall the obligation of the United Kingdom as the administering power to respect the territorial integrity of Mauritius. The Court considers that the obligations arising under international law and reflected in the resolutions adopted by the General Assembly during the process of the colonization of Mauritius require the United Kingdom as the administering power to respect the territorial integrity of that country, including the Chagos Archipelago. The Court concludes that as a result of the Chagos Archipelago's unlawful detachment and its incorporation into a new colony known as the Pyre, the process of the colonization of Mauritius was not lawfully completed when Mauritius acceded to independence in 1968. Having established that the process of the colonization of Mauritius was not lawfully completed in 1968, the Court examines the consequences under international law arising from the United Kingdom's continuing administration of the Chagos Archipelago. Question B. The Court states that it will answer this question drafted in the present tense on the basis of the international law applicable at the time its opinion is given. The Court, having found that the decolonization of Mauritius was not conducted in a manner consistent with the right of peoples to self-determination, it follows that the United Kingdom's continued administration of the Chagos Archipelago constitutes a wrongful act entailing the international responsibility of that state. It is an unlawful act of a continuing character which arose as a result of the separation of the Chagos Archipelago from Mauritius. Accordingly, the United Kingdom is under an obligation to bring an end to its administration of the Chagos Archipelago as rapidly as possible, thereby enabling Mauritius to complete the decolonization of its territory in a manner consistent with the right of peoples to self-determination. The modalities necessary for ensuring the completion of the decolonization of Mauritius fall within the remit of the United Nations General Assembly in the exercise of its functions relating to decolonization. As the Court has stated in the past, it is not for the Court, and I quote, "To determine what status the General Assembly may wish to take after receiving the Court's opinion or what effect that opinion may have in relation to those states," end of quote. Since respect for the right to self-determination is an obligation erder obnes, all states have a legal interest in protecting that right. The Court considers that while it is for the General Assembly to pronounce on the modalities required to ensure the completion of the decolonization of Mauritius, all member states must cooperate with the United Nations to put those modalities into effect. As regards the resettlement on the Chagos Archipelago of Mauritian nationalists, including those of Chagosian origin, this is an issue relating to the protection of the human rights of those concerned, which should be addressed by the General Assembly during the completion of the decolonization of Mauritius. In response to question B of the General Assembly, relating to the consequences under international law that arise from the continued administration by the United Kingdom of the Chagos Archipelago, the Court concludes that the United Kingdom has an obligation to bring to an end its administration of the Chagos Archipelago as rapidly as possible and that all member states must cooperate with the United Nations to complete the decolonization of Mauritius. For these reasons, the Court, one, unanimously finds that it has jurisdiction to give the advisory opinion requested. Two.
So in the year 2019, the Moors, the competent Moors, who had their three branches of government of the Mauritius Islands, along with the Chagos people of the island, they defeated Great Britain because the International Court of Justice handed down an advisory opinion to the General Assembly of the United Nations. And that advisory opinion was then handed to the UK and the Mauritius Islands to let them know that ICJ's opinion is that Great Britain should remove themselves immediately from that territory and that the Moors of that island have a right to their self-determination, right? While they were decolonized. Even though they had already declared their independence and had full independence in 1968, the United States and Great Britain tried to remove one of the islands to create an air force base. But the ICJ said, "No, that's a violation of international law." "That's a violation of customs of international law." So what should the Moors take away from this? I'm talking about the Moorish Americans that don't exist and the Moroccan nationals of our several Moroccan states. When we utilize international law, the colonies have a tendency to end up on the losing end of it because we have to use international law. It's well-settled principles of law. That must be understood, alright? So I wanna say congratulations to the Moors who received this advisory opinion from the ICJ. They fought a good fight. But you have to ask yourself the question, okay, so what happened? Why is it five years later the UK is still there occupying the Chagos Island, right, along with the United States? Well, you'll find out later on, when you start doing a little research, that in the year 2023, this is a news article from the BBC, okay? Talking about the Keikos Island should pay reparations, says Human Rights Watch, right? So there's an article, right, there they are, right there. That's the Keikos Island. The United States is still over there with their planes. You see, in the year 2023, alright, you see it? Okay, but what's happening, right? Says, "The UK is committing crimes against humanity after removing people from the Keikos Island, a British territory in the ocean," rights group said, okay? So when you scroll down, you'll find out what's really going on. You say, "Well, okay, well, here's these islands, right? There's Mauritius Island, then you got Keikos way over there 1,300 miles away." And you say, "Okay, well, what's the Mauritius government doing about it since they got that advisory opinion in 2019?" And you scroll down and you say, "Okay, what have they agreed to?" Okay, it says what? What did they say in this article? Right here, brother Dre.
Mauritius insists the US can continue to keep its base on Diego Garcia and that it will commit to resettling any individuals of Chakasian origin on their home islands.
Alright, so what happened? This is written in 2023. Read again. Mauritius insists the US can continue to keep its base on Diego Garcia and that it will commit to resettling any individuals of Keikos origin, right, on their home islands. So the United States is still over there on the island and the Mauritius government, right? Now that they got possession of the island back, guess what they doing now? Leasing out the land, right? Now, the indigenous people, right? The Chagos people are trying to come back to the island, but the Mauritius government is kind of holding off on it. Their own government now is holding back Chagos people from going back to the island 'cause the United States got their military. The United States now is doing what? Paying a lease to stay there. Now, the Mauritius government is making money now. You see what's happening? But you gotta remember what I told you now in the beginning, okay? So you gotta understand about the people. These people have been fighting to get their rights back, okay? These are Moors. And they wanna come back to the island. But they come under the Constitution, right? Of the other islanders, the central government. The Mauritius are governing over even this island. You gotta understand what's happening, okay? And that central government now, the Mauritius are collecting the money. But are they technically giving any money to the Keikos people? Well, you gotta ask yourself that question. Right here, what's this last paragraph say, brother Dre?
Most of the population of the Keikos Islands was sent to Mauritius 1,000 miles to the south without compensation. Some moved to the Sakilis and to Britain, where many now live Crowley, West Sussex.
Right? So the people been displaced. They're waiting on the Mauritius government to help the Keikos people get back on their own island. But keep in mind, the United States and Great Britain signed a lease agreement in 2016 for a 20-year lease, right? 20-year lease. That's 2036, okay? So you gotta see what's happening here, you know, not to get into the politics of the Mauritius government, but what you have to understand... but you have to understand, uh, first of all, that's their president, okay? That's their president, okay? And here's their government officials, right? That's the legislative branch, right? List of honorable members. This is some of the members of the government, okay? Mauritius government, the government, okay? That's their government representing the people of all those islands, okay? This is the individuals on the island, Mauritius government. So their job is to look out for the Keikos people that way they can get their land back, okay? This is the government that's sitting there now. Alright, sitting members of parliament, et cetera. Right, it's their obligation to make sure Chagos people can return back to their mainland island, okay? But these are the representatives. So you have to understand that when you pick your representatives for your state, the representatives have to represent you in the interest of your community because all politics is local, right? All politics is local. So you have to understand that the Keikos people, the Keikos people are waiting for their rights to return back to their land, alright? And this must be understood. They deserve a right to come back to their land, given the fact that ICJ has said, "Yeah, they have a right." You see? We're talking about this more in future, but you got to understand if you hear somebody say, "Oh, man, the UK didn't listen to the ICJ." Well, that's not true. Because first of all, the advisory opinion was handed down to the General Assembly. It was not a direct order directed to the UK. You got to understand this. Therefore, the advisory opinion was to help the General Assembly deal with the UK and the Mauritius government based in arbitration, alright? They left up to a political settlement that's based in the UK and the Mauritius government to figure out their political dispute. However, the Mauritius people, the government itself, the central government that's supposed to be looking out for the Chagos people on the island, they need to take the dispute where? To the ICJ. So Mauritius government has an obligation to look out for all the islanders to take the dispute to the ICJ if in fact those people want their land back. You got to understand what I'm saying. It's been five years, but someone's getting the check. Alright, listen. I said we're going to read something very briefly about the advisory opinion, okay? The ICJ wrote, okay? Real quick, as we start to close out. Alright, on page, okay, 134 of the advisory opinion, okay? Page 134. Okay, I find it very interesting, some of this information, okay? Alright. Okay, we're going to read this one sentence right here, your brother Joseph. Going to read here to here, okay?
Separation of the Congo's, uh, of the Congo, excuse me, advisory opinion, 157. "The Court recalls that while the exercise of self-determination may be achieved through one of the options laid down by Resolution 1541, it must be, it must be the expression of the free and genuine will of the people concerned."
So therefore, Resolution 1541 gave you three options, right? Emergence of a sovereign independent state, right? That's one. Number two is what? Free association with an independent state? Or number three was what? Integration with an independent state. So right here, the ICJ says, "It's still the choice of the people, of what they want." The colonists can't pick one of the three for you. It's left up to you and your self-determination. It's not colonist determination, it's self-determination. More specifically, Moorish self-determination and not colonist self-determination, right? The colonists cannot do the determination for Moors. It's up to the Moors. And this is what Moors got to understand. Guess what's been our self-determination for decades? We may call ourselves Moorish Americans and try to enforce the Constitution of the United States. Wrong answer, misconception. It shows your incompetency. We were supposed to be studying international law to understand the choices of Resolution 1541, Principle Number Six, and pick one of the three. And which one of the three should we be choosing? Emergence of a sovereign, right? A sovereign independent state. Why do I say that? Because the Empire Morocco is the state. But the only way to get the Empire Morocco back, we have to claim it what? One territory at a time under what? Udi Fasidade's juris. That's the way you get the empire back. But the empire is the state. That's the parent state. And all the Moroccan governments, the Moors government, the Moxxin come underneath what? The independent state called the Empire Morocco. We'll talk about that another day, but check this out. Okay, let's get down here. This section right here, 159. Brother Joseph.
159. "Some participants have argued that the customary status of the right to self-determination did not entail an obligation to implement that right within the boundaries of the non-self-governing territory."
Right there, the colonists like, "No, man, they can't get self-determination right where the colonists actually live as well," right? So the Court comes back and says, "Uh, there's no international law or customary rule, right? There's no norms that say anything about the fact that Moors or indigenous people cannot get their territories returned back to them even where the colonists reside," you see? You got to understand what's happening here. So from the top, then we'll keep reading.
159. "Some participants have argued that the customary status of the right to self-determination did not entail the obligation to implement that right within the boundaries of the non-self-governing territory." 160. "The Court recalls that the right to self-determination of the people concerned is defined by reference to the entirety of a non-self-governing territory as stating, as stated in the aforementioned paragraph six of the Resolution 1514. See paragraph 153 above."
Paul, so when the ICJ said, "Uh, according to the legal argument, the legal defense of the inhabitants, they can invoke Resolution 1514, right? Paragraph six." And what does that say? You got to get back the land without any restrictions, you see? Can't be any type of restrictions to stop inhabitants from rising up as long as they do what? Check the applicable boxes of international law. This is where Moorish Americans didn't understand international law. We could have got our land back decades ago. At the very least, we could have got it back in the 60s. At the very least, while Africa was doing it, right? Keep in mind that the Mauritius people on the islands, they had their constitution in 1968. What was going on in 1968? Civil rights. Guess who got assassinated in 1968? Martin Luther King. Two months later, guess who else got assassinated? Robert F. Kennedy, who was on a campaign trail to become president, right? Before both of them was assassinated, who was assassinated before them? Ilmael Shabazz, 1965. Who was killed before Ilmael Shabazz? John F. Kennedy, 1963. So all throughout the 60s, the Moors were decolonizing on islands. Now all of a sudden, in the United States jurisdiction, the FBI, J. Edgar Hoover, and all the rest of the alphabet boys are trying to stop the nationalism movement. You got to understand what's happening in the 60s. Lots of stuff was going on because of what? Resolution 1514 of 1960 was a landmark international law that allowed all the inhabitants to get their land back. The Kennedys knew it. Martin Luther King knew it. Ilmael Shabazz knew it. You got to understand what's happening. Take it up from here.
Both state practice and opinion juris at the relevant time confirmed the customary law character of the right to territorial integrity of a non-self-governing territory as a corollary of the right to self-determination. No example has been brought to the attention of the Court in which, following the adoption of Resolution 1514, the General Assembly or any other organ of the United Nations has considered as lawful the detachment by the administering power part of a non-self-governing territory for the purpose of maintaining it under its colonial rule.
You see right here, so ICJ said, "No, no, 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 no. According to international law, right? Resolution 1514 of 1960 said these Moors got a right to rise up and pick which status they want. What do they want? Do they want emergence of a sovereign independent state? Do these Moors want a status of what? Free association with an independent state? Or do we want integration with an independent state? Where our treaty, the Act of Sarah of 1906 preamble says what? We're supposed to maintain what? Sovereign and independence, right? Integrity of the domains of the state and economic liberty without any inequality." You got to understand what's happening here. The Triple Principle of 1906 was a bill of rights. There's no question to ask. The questions already be answered. Moors have a right to external reemergence sovereignty to be a part of the independent state of the Empire Morocco. That must be understood, alright? So we'll pick up the rest of this, Class 124. I end with that. Islam.